All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's 9:31. Roll call, Mike Ridley here. John Chalmers here. Don Webb is here. Mike Shervany is here. Jane McGinnis is here. Absent is Lisa Schofield. She had some issues. And absent again is Kelly Ashford. So I'm hoping Kelly gets back sooner. We might have to take a look at her involvement, so.
Do you know when she's coming back?
She usually comes back this time of year. I was hoping, so I'm gonna send her an email. She doesn't, she did, she answers texts and not emails. So I'll try and get a hold of her tonight. We may have to have another replacement there if she's not gonna be involved, especially at this time of year. Okay, is there any public comment on the agenda today? Well, we do that on purpose. We don't want you to have a copy. Okay. Yeah, see, I got a copy of mine here. Okay, hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. Now, is there any public comments on the agenda? Then we'll move on to approving the March 8 meeting minutes. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review them. And that's basically the review of the in-betweens, site plan review.
I'm going to accept the minutes after.
Nope. Not yet. So the one thing that I noticed was that I, that I should have written something in there welcoming Lisa to the planning commission, and I didn't. She's listed as attending, but, so I just wanna put a bullet point in there, welcome Lisa.
Is it in there?
Yep.
Is that down on the public comments?
It probably would be board comments on agenda items, I think.
So do we have a motion to approve the minutes from?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, okay. All favors, all right, okay. Okay. The purpose for this, basically, the meeting today is to review the capital improvement plan submissions. Based on MTA and the township board, they, it asked us to review the capital improvement plans that's been submitted for the 2023-24 budget. So what I'd like to do is start off the, start off the process with Jane, back in February, had sent out an email to the Parks Commission, the DDA, the library, the airport, and the township board, asking them to submit a request, a request for the required forms. And it was the, each capital improvement project should be listed on a separate page form. Each project should be prioritized. Each project should be estimated cost over 15 grand. Each project should be fund source, grant, general fund, and donation. Form should be emailed to the planning commission chairman, myself, John Webb. And we didn't want them later than April 1st. So as of today, we have, some of the forms are in, some of them we don't have in. But, and basically, how we're gonna put this together, we got a copy of the Sheboygan County Commissions, the planning commission at the county level, how they put together the contribution, or the capital improvement for the county board. Based on my contact with Mr. Kramer, he said we should make it simple. So what I'd like to do is, when we get through sorting through all the different items that we have, put it on one sheet of paper and show as needed, or needed, desirable, and then put them in order of the budget year that these items need to be, you know, funded in. So based on that, Dawn, Jane has pulled together a list of all the submissions we have. We had a lot of duplications coming from different people as far as different amounts of money, so we might have to sort through what's the right amount of money and some of the stuff. And basically, the two areas I think that we're gonna look at is the parks and the township, you know, funding needs, because those come out of the township budget. The police department, the library, the DDA, those are all separate funded. But we will also put those in the package to be submitted to the board, too. But they should be separately funded from the budget, I would say. If I'm wrong, I can.
Well, I would think you might wanna discuss the police. DDA is different, because they do have a revenue stream, and that's what they.
Well, that's what I need to know, too.
Yeah, they have their own operating budget within that revenue stream that we capture every year. The, still, the police department has to come to the township board, because we adjust that millage every year.
Right, I understand that.
So if they come in saying we need 4.6 mils, because we need to, we need to do this or that. So that, but if they had a, their own little wish list, yeah, so are you saying that you expect Gordon to present his own capital improvement?
We did get some.
You did?
Oh, we did get some, okay. I didn't know where you got some.
We did get some, it's just, yeah. How we.
I think the purpose of including them is so that when we go through it, if there's overlapping projects, or, you know, DDA has a project, that the parks also has a similar project, we can sort that out. So I went through and pulled out duplicates. Some are duplicates, but they have different numbers.
Right, that's what I gave you the other day.
So we can figure out which is the correct.
What's the right amount of money? I was hoping somebody from those areas would represent.
I sorted them, tried to sort them mostly by admin, parks, whatever. So this first set that'll staple out the copies, you won't pass those, are the admin ones. This next set are the parks ones.
Basically, the parks came through.
Police department.
Janet through Doc Schofield, right?
Yeah, I talked to Doc.
Yeah, so we got, we got those.
We also have the parks five-year plan.
Okay.
The next set is from the airport. And this is DDA and parks. It's kind of their plan from the DDA and then the parks, so that's.
Okay. Okay, so how do we wanna start, or how do we wanna go through this stuff?
You wanna start with the admin ones?
Yeah, let's go, we'll start with the township.
Okay, which one?
That's the one with the picture of.
The picture on the front, okay.
I know the number one item on there, and I'm not sure how that's gonna be funded. I know at the board meeting the other night, this was Martha Street parking lot. I thought, you know, Bobby had said to me that they're hoping to sell of some property who would pay for it, but we still should put it on the list as far as budgeted money, so I would think.
Right, because the sale of property, we go into general fund, and then we'd have to reach.
Right. So I, I would think that would be the number one item for the township.
Can I offer, I don't know if it's in there, let me look. Did you have an alternative to that parking lot?
All, all of those here are the ones that were turned in to us.
Yeah, that's why we're.
And I didn't see any alternative.
Well, okay, because we talked about a parking lot back here that would connect, that would actually.
Yeah, that's the library piece, right?
Yeah, but they changed their plan.
Okay.
They're talking about a pocket park on this side of the building, on the south side of the building. And I guess we could, we'll, we'll come back to that one later.
Okay.
Because that's something that's gonna be a total different discussion. It would, it would talk about.
We don't have.
But we don't have a form for it, right?
Right, well, I was gonna say, you got Martha Street.
Yeah, I would think that's one of the first things we put on the list, was the Martha Street.
Yeah.
Parking lot, and the, 'cause they're talking about 2023. Now, these items that say 2024, is that the 2024, 2025 budget year, or the?
Yeah, must be.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear about what we're doing here. So we're gonna look at these, and we're gonna come up, are we coming up with a list, or are we just putting them in order? What are we doing?
No, we'll come up with a list after we've each one.
So, so for this one, it's admin, right?
Yeah.
Admin?
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be a spreadsheet.
And it's, it's needed. That's, you know, that was a priority for the township board. And we have two representatives on the board today, so I'm assuming they're, they're well of support of this. And it's in this budget year, so we're talking about $60,000.
So I'm gonna have project, year of completion, and estimated cost.
Yeah.
And source of funding, maybe.
Well, it's right now, it's gonna come out of the budget.
I don't know that that's, I mean, I think that's up to.
Well, that's what.
I think that's up to them to figure out.
Yeah, they can figure that out. I mean, it's, we'll just present that.
I just got a general ledger, I can't remember.
Do you know?
Yeah, but that could change.
You know, before I forget.
The terms are gonna be changing anyway, so I wouldn't even worry about it.
Yeah, all we're doing is giving you guys a list, and then you guys can sort through, you know, where you wanna do it. Because basically, I was gonna read the county board of commissioners. The planning commission's role, preparing the CIP as an advisory only, with ultimate authority concerning actual future development resting with the governing body. So the board will make all those decisions. So anything that, you know, we do is an advisory to the, to the township board. So when we look at and pull it together, planning commission, however, does hold authority to make determinations of project prioritization desirable or needed for anticipation of county capital improvements. But by any recommendation by the planning commission is not binding by the board, so. So it's up to us to look through, and we feel something isn't necessary.
So why doesn't the board just do this? I mean, why are you guys having?
It's actually listed in planning commission's duties.
Yeah.
Yeah, this part of the, yeah, the MTA, in the past, the township supervisor would pull it together. But with the MTA, it says, and in the bylaws, it states, the planning commission bylaws, the state of Michigan, it says it's optional whether the township supervisor or the planning commission. And our, and our board, our township board felt that because we're basically independent eyes or whatever on this thing, we can sort through this stuff a little easier. So when they look at it, they don't have to make a lot of decisions. If we can look at stuff and say, hey, this looks like it's needed or not, then.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
The next two on here, actually, next three are sewer related.
Okay, and those are, those would be in the 2024 budget year, right?
Well, the first one says.
The first one would be right now.
2023.
Right, okay, I see, I see. Oh, completed.
And that should really be one number one on the list if you have to change a sewer pump.
Yep.
Add a parking lot.
Well, it's needed, so, I mean, it's on there with the parking lot. So when we get done with theirs, we can rank.
Priority.
One, two, three, four, five. Let me sort through them, you know, does that sound?
Yeah, unfortunately, when we got these, they were supposed, people were supposed to prioritize them, needed, desired, put them in, in order. But every one of them says needed. Every one we've gotten, every one of the forms says needed.
Okay, so, so this is where.
It's irrelevant.
Okay, so this is where I, this is where I have a question. Because the, the funding is special assessment district. How are we supposed to rank or even do anything with this when we don't know? A special assessment district, correct me if I'm wrong, means that people have to vote to accept it. So why are we putting something on there that people have not voted on? Because if it's voted down, in my mind, you're tying up funds. You're putting something on there that ties up funds as needed.
What is it that you're talking about? What's the sewer project?
The sewer.
Pump replacement.
Pump replacement. It says funding is a special assessment district, SAD. It's a SAD.
Right.
So why would we tie up funds?
It's already established. Is that the, the pump for the, the commercial district?
That's the pump for the commercial district.
So that's already established, so we would build them for that. That would come out of the funds that they are already paying.
So it's not a special assessment district?
They did a special assessment district.
So the people vote on it, or no?
They had to vote on the extra, no, they're already paying.
That's just part of the maintenance.
Okay, so there's confusion.
So they get a special assessment?
No.
I would just put ongoing maintenance paid by sewer SADs. I think you just, you change, that what you're referring to, number eight there, or number nine?
No, it says, it says, proposed method of financing acquisition or construction, commercial SAD.
Yes, a commercial special assessment district. It's already established.
I think you, I think you need to specify that as the sewer revenue stream. We have a sewer revenue.
So you're not going out for a special assessment district? Okay, so that's incorrect.
Put it on the list and, and put that down as being funded through the sewer.
Sewer, sewer revenues.
And we'll put it on the list. I mean, they, they submitted, it's something that needs to be.
So we should cross up commercial SAD, right?
Can we just call it the commercial sewer district?
You don't put anything down there as far as SADs.
Well, you have to have a method of funding. That's a requirement.
But as far as the SAD, you don't even. No, the SAD, that doesn't.
There's not an SAD.
Yeah, that's the wrong, yeah, that's the wrong.
It's the current commercial sewer district.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think you just put down, because your, it actually would be your O and M. I don't know where else you would get that.
So O and M increase?
Repair, replacement, it could be R and R.
O and M increase.
Yeah.
That's really just a maintenance item.
So it's an O and M increase is what the.
Like O and M or R and R. I bet, but it all comes out.
That may have been increased.
The R and R all comes out of the O and M.
No, because they're already putting money in an, in an account for R and R and O and M. We just take it out of that account.
The repair and replacement comes out of that account, and you'd have to, if we were gonna do that.
So it's RRI, so you're saying that it comes out of RRI?
So we'll put it on the list, but we'll show the funding coming out of RRI.
RRI.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's gotta be put out there so people know it's coming.
Right, right, right.
So when we publish our.
And you're sure you have the money in the RRI account?
Not sure how much we have in that account.
But that's what they're saying.
So that's what will determine when we.
That's what they're gonna, yeah.
We have, we have what we're required to have in there.
And you can use it for that, because that's RRI's restricted on.
That's what, that's what's for, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's number, that's gonna be number two?
Well, that's, that's the way it's sitting on here, yeah.
Just go by what it's on the list.
Well, it says it's needed, so is it needed?
Anything that's needed.
Well, we do need it.
Yeah.
It's not needed right now.
Well, it's just, it's just on the list.
Well, it says estimated project to commence 2023 this year.
Okay, it's, it's needed, but we're gonna, it's being funded out of the RRI. It's going on the list under administration as needed, but it's gonna show funding as RRI.
I, I think all of the needed, I mean, how do you prioritize needed?
Well, we'll put them down and.
I mean, it's, it's good, that's why it's gonna be up to the board to decide.
Which number one, which number two?
In their budget and their funding.
Well, we'll put down the ones that are needed.
So year 2023.
Needed while this year.
But every one of these says needed.
I know. Well, that's what we have to try and determine.
No, so it is replacement upgrades for the pump. Yeah, so they're saying they're gonna spend the money this year.
But you don't do that until you need to do it.
All right, the next one.
Okay, next one is emergency sewer pump, electrical generators. And it's needed, an estimated project that commences in 2024. So that would be in next year's budget. Estimated cost is $150,000. And the method of financing is, uh, looks like it's congressionally directed spending request EPA, Michigan, Eagle, and grants.
But that's an earmark that we don't have.
Right, so we're gonna have, we'll put it down there, and that, to be determined as far as where it's gonna come out of. It's in 2024, so it's not in this year.
Right, 'cause we applied for that grant.
Yeah.
So if we get that grant, that's.
So we'll put it on the list as a budget item in 2024, or budget year item in 2024. And we'll say to be determined as far as source of funding. We'll put the amount.
But it's also determined by whether Phase 1 and Phase 2 and Phase 3 are actually approved.
Right.
Yeah, but we're not gonna go and ifs and all that stuff. We're just putting down there that's, that they wanna do.
They're figuring out six years of plans.
So we're not, so basically, we're not prioritizing.
Nothing after 2023, we're not prioritizing. We're putting it down there, 'cause this is kinda, I don't wanna say a wish list, but it's something that they need. And right now, they're looking to get funded through. Next year, it may be a whole different story.
There's some grants and some programs and stuff.
But if there is no sewer district 1 and 2.
Well, it doesn't happen.
After the bids go in, then there's no funding, no need.
Right, right. But needs to go on the list as a.
If we do have a sewer district 1 and 2, we have to have it on the list so we can get it. That's what it is.
Okay. So why wouldn't that go on the list next year after you have the, why wouldn't you put that on the list next year?
Well, then we do. We're gonna put 24. We're gonna put it on the list.
It is on 24.
Yeah, but that gets updated, the five, the five-year plan gets updated every single year.
But it should be on the plan for five years.
But you're doing the CIP program for six years, so, you know, we're looking six years out on some of these projects, too. So we're trying to prioritize them. But we have to be ready. If this goes, we have to have it in the works. If it doesn't go, well, then it just, it's taking.
This is a plan, just like when we do our master plan, it's a plan.
It is, it's a plan.
You don't need the funding for stuff out in 2024, 2025, 20, this is kinda what they wanted.
I get it, but this is not, this, it's a, it's a plan, but we're, I, I thought that we're supposed to be, this is supposed to be driving the budget.
Yeah, it does. I mean, then you, then you, we do six years.
But if we're, but our budget, if, if it says we're, we're going to be funding it by grants, it won't really affect our budget that we do, but we need to have it on the list. You know, it, it determines whether we get the grants, whether the, the district goes. But if, if it all goes, we have to be ready. We have to have that, so we have that.
That's like they have the Phase 3 sewer expansion on here. Just put it on the list. It's 24 to 26. So we'll just put it on the list.
Okay.
And say funding to be determined, it's $6.5 million, so, I mean, that's.
Okay, so we're just putting things on the list. We're just, all, all we're gonna do is create a spreadsheet and hand it off.
It's just a list.
Well, we'll, we'll sort it out by needed and then the years, like 24, 20, this calendar, or, at this.
Is there anything that's not labeled needed?
Well, yeah, but I'm saying, anything in 23, 2023, if there's something on there that we may not wanna put on the list, but mostly really.
This is making our life easier than we're just putting things on a list.
And at the point, too, this is the first year all the departments have done this. So they, they, you know, are going to, you know, prioritize theirs as everything that they want is needed. So you're gonna get a lot of that anyway, but, you know.
They are.
People will get.
Every, every single one is needed.
We'll put it down.
But it, it'll filter out, you know, but that's why we need you guys to help us figure out.
We can take a look if it says needed, and we're thinking, well, you know, it's really not. And we can, we can make a notation if we think it's not.
Well, of course, there could be duplications, too. More than one person is needed on it.
Right, and we get through all of these.
It's still four thousand of them needed.
But our job, our job is to sort through duplications, too. They don't need to get three or four, you know, forms coming in from different groups for the same thing. Yeah, I know, that's why we're doing this. Okay, we're trying to make it simple, so.
You don't, I mean, I got projects, we respond before the number of dollars, and X in the year that they're on.
Johnson's spreadsheet expert, we talked about that today. I used to do that.
No, I'm a spreadsheet.
I used to. I used to do that years ago, but, okay. Next one is the sewer plan. See, this is something that we're not gonna be involved with, you know, it's a, these three sewer expansions. So that goes on the list. You know, $6.5 million to be determined is the, you know, is the funding. So that'll go on the list as 24, it says 24 to 26, so I don't know what year you put it on.
You put an X in each year, 'cause we don't know.
Well, we can put it at the end, just say 24 to 26.
That's what I mean, you'd have a column with each year, and XXX, which every year it goes.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah.
We can't determine.
Oh, yeah.
I like that, I like that way you can look at it.
Well, so I think the estimated year completion should be TBD, because you can't have 24 to 26 and not, yeah.
So we'd put that at the end as a, we put it on the list, but it's something that would be TBD for the year, too.
Yeah.
Well, if we get that funding, it'll be sooner than 26.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the completion date, you have 24.
If we get the funding, it'll be completed before that, 'cause we need that completed before we do the Phase 3 and all that.
Yeah, so I say that it's still should be TBD.
So that would be our first priority. But if we don't get the funding.
But they told us they wanted it in those five years, four years, so we just put it.
So what budget year would you think the funding would have to go in?
Well, she's got.
24, 25, 26?
I'd say 25.
25, okay. We'll just stick it under 25.
Okay.
And put funding TBD.
So estimated year project to commence is 25, estimated completed is TBD.
Yes.
The next several are road projects.
Yeah, I, I got concerns about the road projects, much like Phase 3s, because they are citizen-driven. Those are citizen-driven.
But we can also put them on the list as, you know, as something in the future that needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
But TBD as far as the funding.
The board has to take a look at.
I, but.
What I'm, what I'm saying, if they're looking at Cressy, and they're looking at, what was the other one, Navinoy? Okay, but you've got people that have been clamoring for Grandview Beach. There's probably three or four other roads Plymouth Beach has been talking about. How are you gonna, and they, we have, we're gonna put down two roads.
You better put them all down.
Yeah, but put, put all of them.
Yeah, but those are the ones you know you're gonna do. Plymouth Beach, we're still.
Well, but I know, I mean, people have been talking about it.
I understand, but we have forms for, for these ones, not the other ones.
But nobody, there's no, Plymouth Beach has been talking about Plymouth Beach. Nobody is talking, nobody has come in to talk about, there's no, this is special assessment district. I don't think this belongs.
Nothing is driving this, right now, other than somebody wanted.
Well, you, I mean, you can tell that, I guess, to be objective about it, you can look at that first section in Navinoy and say, yeah, that's the, the boat launch. We have, we have an interest in that, to fix that, the township does. As far as down the rest of Navinoy, that is, that is really prior, that's totally up to the.
Right, that would be up to the people, I think.
So really.
The other, the other roads, and you would have to just, geez, I got probably a list of six roads and that, about people have been wanting to.
Victor Drive.
Victor Drive, yeah, I don't know if you'll.
Well, you know, we have forms.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
We need to put them on. People have submitted forms, the township board has, or other people have, have submitted forms on paving. And it's TBD, it's a SAD district, but we should put it on the list, and for 2024.
As a project to look at, that doesn't mean we wouldn't have to have petitions and.
No, it's just, it's just out there to, hey.
It's just a project that needs to be.
Exactly.
Our eyes need to be on that.
Are you going to be adding, is the planning commission going to be adding other, nothing other than?
Other than what we got here today. I'm not gonna go out and try and find.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're gonna do roads.
We did, we went around, I mean, you know, Janet went around and got stuff from the Parks Commission, and we got, you know, and Gina sent out and emailed everybody, and it is what it is. And I told Gina, we didn't get it by April 1st. You know, and even Bob had said, you know, you put it on the list, but you gotta.
It doesn't mean we won't consider other roads if the people come to us with petitions or ask us to look into it. Or even with this, with Navinoy, it doesn't mean that it actually will be funded unless we discuss, you know, special assessment or things like that. But it's just a one that, that the township is interested in doing because of the boat launch, and we're just keeping eyes on it and seeing what the priority is.
I think, like you'd said earlier, this is the first time going through this. And I think if people realize, you know, what's been done here, you might get more forms coming into the township.
Yeah, and this is a six-year plan, so it doesn't have to be done this year or next year. It just put it on there so we can keep focus on that, because these are gonna get shifted every year.
It has 2024.
Yeah, well, okay, that's next year. We'll just put it down there.
Put it down, and like they wrote it.
But if you're gonna do priorities, that would not be needed, because that puts it in a whole different category.
Well, we're not doing priorities, 'cause for this one, this is in 2024. The only ones we're, we're really putting in order are the ones for this calendar year, or that calendar year.
But on, on the roads, it's so far out in the future that there's no real driven need. But on the roads, it's so far out in the future that there's no real driven need for it. That's all.
I, we have a form that was submitted.
And we're, and we're supposed to make a decision where it goes.
On the 2023 budget year, not the 24, 25, or 26.
It doesn't really say that. It says we need to prioritize the forms that we got.
Right.
How you prioritize it though is up to you, and you present it to us. That's, that's.
I don't know how you would prioritize the road though. I would just put it on the list. That's what I'm looking. Anything past 23, I would look at prioritizing 23 if you have more items than you have money to spend on them. 2024 on, you just put it down. And this one here is going to be a sad anyways. It doesn't matter.
And that's, and that's.
We're just putting it on the list, so it's an awareness.
We either put it on the list or we don't put it on the list. I don't want to put it on the list.
Let's, let's make it simple.
Either we put on, either we put on, just everything they gave us.
Yes, and we're going to do that. We're going to do that.
If everything's going to go on the list, why don't we just take all of these forms and staple them together with our cover letter and say, here's the list.
Well, you got to go through them and, and put them by the years. You just.
All right.
We're doing a summary sheet. That's our, what we're supposed to do.
So basically, we're going through these to see where they fit on your summary.
Exactly. Yeah, and if they're in the, what budget year? If they're in the 2023 budget year, then we may have to look at priorities. Is this stuff actually needed?
So this is a, so to me, and this is just me, we don't need to go through every single one of these. It's just a list. I put it on a spreadsheet, and it says priority year is 24. That's what they got here. So.
Nothing more.
That's it.
We're reviewing it because.
But we don't even have to review it. We just put.
Well, the ones after 23, we don't, as long as you put it, but we need to make sure all the stuff we put on the list is, you know, legitimate type stuff too.
Yep. So we've got.
Well, you know, but that's the problem is that I don't.
Once we get through the township, it's going to be easy peasy.
Yeah, the road improvement things are not legitimate because it's citizen-driven. That's the way, that's the way, it's citizen-driven. Until somebody puts it on, until somebody comes in here with a petition and says, I want this road paved, this is not a project. I mean, that's, that's the law.
That's what we've got. One of these is.
All it is is a list.
It is.
But again.
The, the board has looked at other roads for years before the citizens came to us, and that's a concern. We have to keep an eye on that. That's all it is. It's just a priority.
So what's going to pay for it?
It's going to be a sad.
It would be a special assessment.
Special Assessment District. That's all we're doing is just putting it down.
It's 10% funded by the general fund.
Only one I would put down as, and I agree with you, that they're all SADs. The only one is that stretch in Navinoy to the boat launch. Because that, we have, we have, we generate traffic there. That, that's our, just that little stretch that goes to the entrance of Marina Park off of Old Onaway Road. That is the only one I would take that, that I think should be a, a board's, a board's priority somewhere on their list, because I, I know that that is, we beat it up pretty good with all the traffic that go in there. No.
Well, so does, so does Hall Marina.
Well, then that's a different, then that's.
It's still a sad, yeah. It's still a sad. It's still a sad.
Well, this don't make them, this don't make this thing.
And I would say probably Hall Marina probably generates as much as the boat launch.
Yeah, Mike, I'm sorry, we're making it tougher for it than it should be.
Yeah, I mean, we're debating stuff. We got the forms. We look at the forms. We're going to put them on a spreadsheet. Make it easy for them. The only ones that we're going to have to prioritize, if we need to prioritize, is the ones that are in this next year's budget year. And some of the stuff in here.
But if we don't debate or discuss some of these things, then what is the point of us even going through the process? We got the forms. Here are the forms. That's it. Otherwise, what is our role?
All effort is project, Mark.
But our job is not to reject them. Our job is to prioritize them. If we don't think.
Put them on the bottom of the list.
Put them on the bottom of the list. We got the list. Put them on the list and put them on the bottom and say, you know, not needed, or it's going to be funded by some, somebody else.
At the bottom, at, at the list, on the spreadsheet, you can put project, special assessment, potential special assessment district projects. And those that were funded by that, just say, you know, those are not part of the other at all. They're just a separate category of potential SADs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, why don't we do that?
So I'm, so I'm looking at this spreadsheet, and I'm, and I'm looking at, all of these other ones are going to be on the list, and then at the bottom of the spreadsheet, I'm going to have a break, and it's going to say, uh, special assessment road, and just list them.
Yes.
Nothing more.
Nothing more.
As long as we capture them and the board gets a copy, gets a, as long as it's on there. It doesn't mean.
Because it can't be prioritized until there's actually a special assessment approved.
Exactly, exactly. But we need to put it on the list.
Even, even the Navinoy one, same, the same, everything that's, here it says SAD.
Everything on that list.
It's a separate category at the bottom.
Yeah, so.
Potential SAD.
We just have to keep track. The board doesn't go down every road, you know.
Yeah, we have three of them here.
Well, who, who brought this in? I mean, who brought, who actually brought these in?
The board did, I think.
Were people, are people coming in asking you guys to do this?
I didn't submit this CIP.
I think they came from.
Bob, Bob gave you.
He thought there was a need to just keep an eye on it.
Just put them on the, on the bottom of the list.
So they're not, yeah, see, that's, I got it. No, I'm not making it hard. I want to make this right.
I, I understand. Nobody trying to make you put something down you don't want to put down. So, so we'll put those three that's on the list as.
They'll just be down at the bottom.
Down at the bottom as, so they can keep track of them.
Yeah.
There may be other SADs.
I mean, for that, if that's the case, then I want to put Frontak in there, because people are complaining about.
Well, you didn't turn a form in.
I know.
You should have turned a form in.
I didn't think that this is a how this is supposed to work.
It doesn't mean that it's not, I mean.
Just, I don't know, you listen.
There's other things.
It doesn't mean it gets funded.
Plus, the stuff that's not on the list doesn't get funded, because again, you got to have petitions, you know, to get it started, so.
You can't, yeah, which is why.
I just want to argue with Bob and his people.
I don't care about that. I don't care about that. It's not.
I'm not here to.
Put down, suggest an SAD.
Yep.
All right, let's move on.
It's not official.
Cemetery repair and maintenance. Now, this is one that's legitimate. They need money out of the general fund. It's in 2023. They rank it as a priority, so that should go on the 2023 as a needed project from the administration.
What's the, what's the cemetery project that's been?
Cemetery repair, maintenance and upgrades. Fencing at the Oak Hill Cemetery needed it. It says general fund.
Okay, let me explain. I don't, did they go into detail on what that was for?
Yes.
Can I explain some of that?
Yep. It says overgrowth of roots are also causing damage, extensive meld and mold and milded damage on the monuments. Uh, fencing at the Oak Hill Cemetery needs a repair, replacement 20K per year for five years to start fiscal year by boarding, by board during the budget process.
Yeah, a lot of that is taking care of those tree canopies. We're still working on that, which we have to get the stump ranking done, which we haven't done yet. And the fence along the street there has been damaged. I don't know, a tree fell on it, or snowfall hit it, or what the heck, but that has to be repaired. So that's, that's what a lot of that kind of stuff is.
Has that been turned into the insurance company? Wouldn't that have the, the tree?
Oh, that's been like that for years and years. It's passed out.
Just put it down on the list.
Put it on the 2023 list for $20,000 and then.
Nothing more.
Okay.
This is just Oak Hill. We don't have anything for Ohioville.
Right, Ohioville is pretty good.
And it's going to be funded through the budget.
Okay. So you're only, so you're, he, that's not what they have, though. They have.
No, they have the rest of the years.
For four years. So are we putting it out there for the four years? Because now you're talking about 80,000, yeah.
20,000 a year, yeah, for four years. I'd put it on the spreadsheet and the other years, the rest.
Well, we may not use that much money, but it's just as an idea of potential funding.
But it was requested, so you have to.
Right, right.
So it says 20, up in the narrative or the justification, it says 20, 20,000 a year for five years, but down the acquisition total, so shouldn't that match?
Yeah. Do they have four years or five years? Which one do we?
Which is a.
We're doing a five-year, right?
You didn't actually set your plan.
It says, no, so it says completed 2026, so you.
Yeah, which one?
Yeah, so you've got too many years here. So you've got.
Do that do for five years, because it's in the narrative.
Put 2025 down.
So let's, wait, no.
Five years. Do five years.
Five years, so 23, so 23 and five is eight, 2028, right? Why?
Definitely four to five, so 27, five years.
We may have to build that wall, Mike, that you were talking about, so that's some of that money.
Some of those retaining walls.
Yeah, so that comes.
So through 2027.
That would help on that.
Yeah.
And then this should be for five years.
So there's some serious issues that Oak Hill we have to address.
You know, I try these, just get, I don't want to wander off. Don't throw anything at Mike if I wander off. These cemeteries are, are meant to be maintaining perpetuity.
Perpetual care, yeah, perpetual care.
What is, what is it? 250 a plot?
I don't know. It's not very much.
I think they're like 400 now.
Are they 400 now? That's still not enough because of the maintenance and.
No, they're two, they're 250.
So I think, to be realistic, and I think we'll bring this up to the board, is that we really have to look at developing a fund, whether it be a, not the $20,000 year, I'm talking about a, that you got a, you know, something, you have something that's for you 10, 20, 30 years from now, because this is the problems we've watched. I mean, standing at the number 19, you're looking in there, you're seeing those, those slopes are starting to cave in, and you're going to see grandpa's feet sticking out pretty soon, so it's a.
Well, that goes back to what we talked about in, in last year, was establishing a cemetery board.
Endowed almost.
Because you're not, you're not regulated by the state, right? Because it's a city government. You don't have to have a maintenance fund like a private cemetery does.
No, we don't have anything like that.
I don't think we have any.
Our church is the same way. We have a cemetery, and I asked, because I'm the treasurer of the church, why don't we have a fund, you know, maintenance fund? Are, aren't we, you know, regulated by the state? And they said, no, because we're a church. We don't have to have a fund. Same with any government. That's what I was told.
Right.
So.
But it goes back to, like I said, establishing a cemetery board or.
Well, again, we're going to put it on.
That's what they most of us.
It'd be a good talk, it'd be a good talking point for the board when they review these items. Okay. The next, last item that they are looking for is.
The, the last two pages are kind of.
Same thing.
No. One's 2024 and the other's 2029.
Way out there past, yeah, we don't need to put that on the list.
2029.
No, we don't even need to put that on the list. 2029. Bob's going way out there.
What, what is it on the list?
IT stuff.
But it, it says the project's going to commence in 2029, and it should be completed by 2028.
Am I looking at the wrong one?
There's one on the last, wait, they jumped ahead. I said, we, we.
Oh, so where are we going? Oh, the last one.
No, let's stay with where we're at, guys. Come on.
Whatever's in the five years.
Okay.
We should.
We're not going to look at the last one.
Okay, so this one, the, the next one that I have is the.
Information technology lifecycle replacement, security upgrades.
Starting, yes, needed, starting 2024.
So that goes on the list for 2024. It's ranked as needed. The cost is minimal, $15,000, so. But again, that would come out of the general fund or a grant.
Okay.
So put that on the list as, under administration, technology lifecycle replacement and security upgrades.
So we're just going to.
Well, the last one is way, I mean, that's.
I just crossed, I just.
It's 2029, so hopefully, I don't know if it's.
What is it then?
It's general technology infrastructure updates.
Oh, well.
I think it's one of Bob's deals that he gave me, so 2029.
There's got to be a way to capture that.
Not this year.
No, I'm saying, so that in the future, people know that it's actually been thought about. I don't know how you do that.
Put it on the bottom of the list of priorities, and just, just think that you got it, and it is there, and, you know.
Because that's something you folks have to think about.
Yeah, something you have to think about, exactly. Things are happening quickly.
Well, yeah, but it's the same as the, so they're going to address it, they're going to already address it.
It's part of the one we're for.
Yeah, but this one just.
The one that's 2024.
That's fine.
I'm not, let's not create busy work.
It's getting off.
Yeah, John.
No.
All right. So we're done with the administration, I think. Hopefully.
All right, next one.
Okay. Hopefully, this is a little bit easier. Because I know Janet sat down with, with Doug, and, because we, we got, we, all we got was a list from the.
The first one is Marina Park Boat Launch Bathroom. So it's the pack that starts with that one.
But that's 2027, so.
But I mean, it's, it's the parks.
Yeah, right, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
The parks.
We're looking for them.
Which one? Are you looking at Marina Park?
Yep.
Marina Park Boat Launch.
Can I make a suggestion there? I think that's.
No, go ahead.
Primary, I don't see it listed here. It says Township Boat Launch Fund or Township General Fund. This is a, this is a great candidate for a trust fund grant or waterways grant.
Right.
Well, again, it's 2027.
Yep, but I'm just saying, in terms, there's.
We can put it down there as that's the last year of the plan, right? Six years? Yeah, this is part of the, so put down TBD, the funding.
Why isn't it part of sewers?
Yeah, it might be part of, that's, that's District Three.
Again, put it down there and put a TBD in the 2027.
That's, that's why it's there. If sewers go in for Phase Three, we would have to upgrade that, so we would have to be conscious of the fact that those bathrooms are our responsibility and hook in and stuff. That's, I think that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, I think.
So put it in 2023 fiscal year. Cost of 50,000.
Okay, he's got 2027.
2027, okay. I'm sorry, I'm getting confused myself. 50,000, and then put TBD for the funding.
That's something we're going to have to discuss, because we just had the bathrooms and the restrooms going down to give old beach would be similar to put something in there. It's a modular, and it was closer to 100,000, so.
Okay, the next one, we're in the parks. So this is Devo Beach Bathroom Replacement. This would be under the 2024 fiscal year. Cost is $125,000. They want a new resi, well, with the construction of the, again, of the new residential sewer system, it must be pump-regulated, so they want to convert over to a bathroom system that goes with the new sewer system. So again, that would be TBD in the 24 fiscal year, but the cost is $125,000. It's either the Spark Grant or the Township General Fund that's going to come out of.
The form.
I don't think it'd come out of the general fund for that. I'm not sure. I'm not sure how that, that looks.
The form right behind that is the same thing, except it says 2025, and it has $140,000 cost. So I left them both in because I wasn't sure.
Well, if it doesn't get one done in the first year, then we're projecting for the second year, depending on when the sewers go through because of inflation and stuff.
Okay.
Just put it in 2024 for the 125, 125.
So it's the same thing, so I'm just going to take this out.
Yeah, well, don't take the second one out, because if it doesn't get done in 24, it'll be 25, so.
Okay.
But is it higher cost?
That's okay.
Yeah, we're just taking it off. We're just going to, I just crossed it off. We're not going to put it down.
Do we have bathrooms in the green docks?
Oh, port of power.
Port of, okay. So now that we're getting sewers.
Yeah, I don't know. That's, that's what I'm saying. We have these things that really are lowballing, same with Marina Park and here, they're lowballing, because if we put something in there, it has to be ADA, and we have to have a, well, we got a well right there that we've been using with the, the golf course. It's right there on the corner.
Yeah, right.
So at least at that, I don't know if that's, that's an expense, but I, I see these things as a lot more expensive than we're putting down. That's, that's fine. We'll put them down as that.
Again, this is a 2025, this is in the 2025 fiscal year. It's $40,000, and again, it says grant, Spark Grant or Township Fund. So again, put it in 2025.
We have to make a, for the board, we have to make it, the trust fund, we got to stay aware of that, because these are all trust fund eligible or waterways.
Well, that's why we'll put it in the list in 2025, and we'll put TBD as far as, whether it's a general fund or, and the 40,000 is, you know, questionable, whether we.
Yeah.
But at least it's out there. And that's all we're doing is putting it out there.
We can put these together, but I'm, I, I don't feel like that we should be putting proposed method of funding. I mean, we, not in the summary, yeah.
I said TBD.
It's in there, you guys figure it out.
No, no, I said TBD. We don't want to, you know, they say and/or, or maybe, that's up to them when they get it to figure out if in 2025, maybe it'll be 2026 too. Who knows? No, no, I said TBD, we don't wanna, you know, they say and/or, or maybe, that's up to them when they get it, to figure out if in twenty twenty-five, maybe it'll be twenty twenty-six, too, who knows?
Well, that's why the next form is the same green box, bathroom replacement, for a hundred and forty thousand.
Well, that's the one I would put in a hundred and forty then, that makes sounds more reasonable, I, I thought you were doing, okay.
Well, I think...
Well, I kept notes of these because I didn't know which number was...
No.
I got you, I got you.
I'm not, yeah, I...
So we have two, two forms that came in for the green docks.
The second one is more realistic.
First one was for forty thousand, the second's a hundred and forty, same year, so I think we'll put the hundred and forty thousand.
Crossed off.
Add them together, that'd be about the right price.
We, we got the modular ones.
Okay, so I'm gonna, so the second one for the hundred and forty thousand is the one that's going in.
Yeah, and then put TBD.
This one is getting crossed off.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Maybe we can hire Doug Duke to cancel. Sorry.
I got rid of the duplicate, the duplicates, the exact duplicates.
Okay.
But if there was a difference in the, in the year or the cost, I didn't know which was going to...
Okay, now, we're, we're still on the bathrooms.
So green docks, so next one is...
Is Cooperation Park bathrooms. That's in twenty twenty-four, again. And, uh...
And these are all under the parks.
So this is gonna be TBD.
Yeah, they're all in the parks. We're just doing the ones on the forms.
We don't know where it's coming from, and, but it's on, okay, so on.
We have all those in the parks. We'll have to talk about the list we got from the parks to get to, of how we, we wanna put those in.
Okay, so Quat Park, yep, so Quat Park, we're just, yep, okay.
Same thing.
What the hell?
Okay, that's one that Doug requested.
Tennis.
Um, the bathrooms need to be upgraded, there's two public bathrooms there, they have lead pipes in them and all kinds of stuff, and they're having a lot of problems with them, so...
Priority one.
And all that, so I mean, he, he desperately needs those, um, upgraded, and then there is no bathroom for the employees, like that, where their maintenance shed is by the, um, ice rink. They're using a port-a-potty now, and, and...
Or the field.
In, in the wintertime, isn't it?
Yeah, no, I can imagine it's pretty cold.
You know, it's not very comfortable, you know, so he says, can you guys kinda just put that in your budget and see how, if it works out?
Well, it shows the next fiscal year budget, not this fiscal year.
Right, so, um, I said, yeah, uh, you know, that was one of his, I think, uh, three priorities, and I said, that's a priority.
Again, that would be TBD as far as funding.
I did, yep.
So that's...
It's, it's on the list, sixty-seven thousand is in there for twenty twenty-four, and it says needed, and it's TBD as far as the funding.
And the next two might be, um, duplicates as well, but it says tennis courts resurfacing, and then the forty-five thousand, and the others...
Well, the one for the tennis courts, that was the one you were moving from this budget here, isn't it, you told me that...
Yeah, see, what happens is that the park's already has a contract for, to review pickleball courts and tennis courts, um, but they don't have a start and end date yet, because it's up to the contractor, uh, to figure that out, and they haven't, uh, figured out a start and end date. So we don't know which fiscal year that money's coming out, so right now, there's forty-five thousand dollars set aside for that, but, um, according to our budget policy, since we're going to zero-based budgeting, that money would go away from them if it's not spent in this fiscal year, and I wanna make sure it's funded for next fiscal year, in that, in other words, we're just kinda rolling it over, but technically, we have to have a CIP to make sure that that happens, I didn't want that skipped when we're doing the vetting season and stuff, and that's why I did that.
So it's gonna be funded out of the general fund, because they're gonna move the money about, they need to have that on their list so they can see it's there, I'm sure you guys will remember it, but still.
Yeah, so make sure it doesn't get skipped on, uh, you know, when we're doing...
The one form says pickleball court, and the other just says resurfacing tennis, so we're resurfacing it.
It's the same thing.
It's the same one?
Yeah, I see that one.
Okay, so I'm gonna, so let's, uh, so let's cross off, let's cross off the first one, because it says fiscal year twenty twenty-four, leave the second one, because it says twenty-three or twenty-four.
Right.
Right, right.
If they started in June...
Yep, it'll get done before.
It'll be done, it will get billed to twenty twenty-three, if they start the work.
If we get billed for it in this, this fiscal year, that, we will take that off the CIP, yeah, you know, the list. If it, if it's gonna be billed for it in the next fiscal year, we wanna make sure that funding is there for them in the budget, so that's why it's in this CIP, I didn't want it skipped in case.
So cross this one off with this one.
So you wanna put forty-five grand in and say it's a budget for this twenty twenty-three.
Yep.
Okay?
Vehicle, lifecycle, it's useful, life, placement's needed.
Okay, so are we on the next one now for a truck replacement?
Yep.
Okay, and I can explain that to you.
Go ahead.
Okay, Doug has, um, an old beat-up pickup truck, he's using for, that, oh, by the tangent that he's using right now, and it's on its last legs, I guess he's got it, you know, put together with twine and binding wire, so, um, it's costing him more every year to keep it just going, so he needs a new truck. But in order to, to get that on the CIP, it has to be, um, not just for replacement, it has to be an improvement, capital improvement. And so he says, I would like that on there, um, he says, so in order to make it, you know, a capital improvement thing, he says, what we really need is a pickup truck that had a dump, uh, truck bed on it, that would be ideal, he said, and I'd be willing to get a used one, he says, I'm not, you know, I've been looking at it for a while, and if we're gonna invest in a new truck, that would be the best thing for the township, so I says, well, if that's what you want, let me write it up, and he had priced them out, some used ones and stuff, and that's what I did, so you put that, you know, we need to get a, a new vehicle, whether it ends up that or not, I don't know.
My only question is, is it gonna be in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, or is it gonna be twenty twenty-four fiscal year, twenty-five, I'm confused on which.
The form says twenty twenty-four.
So that's not, it's coming up, that's the year after.
Right, we won't be able to get to this year, but it's a six-year plan, so I put it in the next year.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure he didn't need it right now, we got it.
Well, if he ends up needing it right now, we may have to do some budget adjustments.
Okay, so we'll put it on the twenty twenty-four.
That's good.
Um, budget year, we'll say it's needed, and seventy thousand, and it's gonna come out of the general fund. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I hope I'm helping you guys tell a little bit here.
No, that's...
Don't answer.
Okay?
I didn't.
All right, uh... The next one. We went through this many years ago, I don't even wanna put it on the list again, but...
I think it's a can of worms.
This came from Jay Rizema.
You know, it'd be nice if we had the property over there?
Yep.
We don't have any property.
Well, so, there's no property.
Uh, we get into, for two reasons, number one, I mean, the, the County Road Commission would love it if we took...
I remember, we went through this with Mr. Face.
Yeah, uh, and then when we did get that, wherever we decided, we, we looked at it, it just caused such a neighborhood fear.
Well, if you think it's gonna be a problem, just leave it off.
Well, there was a lawsuit, this is generated a lawsuit.
You know, I don't think Jay was around when this came through, with the gal from...
And, and there is a need for, um, more public access or improved public access on the west side, when he was campaigning, that's the main thing that everybody told him, we need better access on, on this side of the lake. And, and, and he understands it, so he's trying to just make sure that their concerns are, are addressed.
No.
Um, it's not a hill worth dying on here, um, but it is in the parks, um, five-year plan, I think, to improve some of the lake access, so...
I, I have an idea, is that we draw something up and present it to the County Road Commission, I mean, that, that's the parks. Parks should draw something up and say the county, because they've got a boat launch on the north part of the township, they have a, a boat launch here in the center of town, what, they have nothing in the west... Well, no, I mean, I'm talking about the county.
Well, we have one on Plymouth Beach, too.
That's, but we don't have, no, that, we don't?
That's private, isn't it?
Isn't, no, that's the County Road Commission.
Yeah, that's County Road.
The one on our canal.
The one that's on your canal, you're talking about, right, where the dry hydrant is?
Yeah, we use it.
I'm talking about a boat launch or recreation area.
Oh, oh, oh.
I'm talking about something, something to present to the County Road Commission, and let, let them deal with it, uh, it would be something between the parks and the road commission, wandering off, but I just said...
No, you're not, no, you're not wandering off.
No, it's, that's a big item, we went through five, six years ago with, uh, the gal that owns a Bed Breakfast.
Yeah.
Rob and Roan.
Rob and Roan, and she brought all these people, I mean, it was pretty controversial, so the township, as I recall, you can correct me.
Township is not involved in that.
You gave them one area that they could use as a boat, not a recreation area. She wanted four of them.
Yeah, and that's still, that's still created a bunch of problems, when I was over there, those people are mad because they can't get out of the subdivision, I guess.
What I wrote down on the bottom, it's a parking problem more than anything else.
It is.
Because you get people that go over there with their four-wheelers, and you know what, and you've found this out, too, it all depends on where the fish are.
Yep.
Because I don't even know if you could put a dock down there.
Well, if you looked at anything...
We don't own the road deck.
So...
The only one that, the only one that they, that...
I'm taking it off, I mean, that's my old vote, to not put that on there.
Yeah.
We're having a...
There's a chance to pick up some property there for parking, because if you don't have parking there, that's where your storm comes from.
So, so the, the fix for, for some of this, like Ellinger Road, for example, uh, maybe the road commission needs to work with Little Travis Conservancy, and open up a parking lot in that area.
This is what's on the parks, this is out of their five-year plan.
Okay.
These, these are the items.
We need to talk about this.
You know, Doug just dropped on something, write that down, we're gonna talk about that.
No, no, I know, I know.
You write it down.
You write it down.
I'll write it down, I'll write it down.
I'm a short timer.
Never mind, okay.
I just think...
That would be a good, that would be a good...
Get to Little Travis Conservancy.
Because they didn't do a form, at least we'll put it in theirs.
Yeah. Okay, so, so, the problem that I had with Karen Fleming was, they don't wanna promote people using that property. Any of the conservancies, they actually wanna keep it to a minimum, that's not their goal.
Yeah, their mission is to...
Their goal is to preserve the property.
There's a couple there that would just make perfect sense on...
I know.
We'll talk about the DVA.
Well, that's not in their mission, is it?
Yeah.
Well, that's...
Because I got this from the DVA. Okay, we'll talk about that at the end.
Okay, all right, where are we at?
So we are pretty much done with the, uh, parks.
We're done with parks.
We do have, did you attach that to everybody's?
Yes.
We have their five-year plan, the parks, they did not submit a form, and some of the stuff we do have already on form.
Yeah, Tim Burke just, I think, just said he was gonna submit his five-year plan.
So we'll...
So we're just gonna attach this to what we have, we, we won't put it on the list, we'll just say, this is what the parks is.
That's fine.
Does that make sense?
I'll have to deal with that, we'll deal with that.
Yeah. Some of the stuff is already in the, you know, gonna be on the, you know, on our spreadsheet, uh, other things are, are not, and there's a couple of things, uh...
And a lot of the things that are not on forms are timeframes to be determined.
Yeah, they're just things they wanna do.
And that's why I spoke to Doug, to give his top three priorities, I said, give me your top three.
Well, that's, that's good, that, that's great.
And these, these are category, high, medium, low, so if we attach...
We'll just attach this to the, you know, our final spreadsheet that we do.
Okay.
Okay. The next second is the, um, police department.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, what is, I have the other, oh, that's DDA.
Do we all have the police department? You have one, John? Yeah, I have the extra one, I have two of them.
You took two of them.
I got, sorry.
I isolated it again.
Trying to keep them out of this, okay.
Why do I have so many police departments, are they service free?
Maybe you took John's.
Should there just be one?
There's three of them stapled together, yeah.
Three sheets stapled together, so...
Okay, so we have extra.
Three sheets to the window.
Are you set?
This is the police department, you can't, three sheets to the window, police department.
Okay, even though they did not, uh, do it on the forms...
Well, it's sort of the form.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know.
It's the form.
Ten-four nine.
They have no, well, they do have money on a couple of things.
So...
So how do we wanna handle the police department's, uh, project request?
These are for vehicles, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
He always puts money aside every year towards a new vehicle, until it's enough to pay for it, but he wants it on the CIP, because it's over fifteen thousand, and he wants to make sure that, that the board is aware that he's doing that.
So, you wanna just take all this stuff and just put it on the bottom, put a machine into the police department?
Yeah, they're all vehicles, so it's just one...
Training room.
Training room? Oh, okay, I missed that, vehicle, training room, training room.
Just put it on there like anything else, police department heading, and then two, two vehicles.
Yep, and just put it here. So they're aware of it, most of it, there's only one for this.
So when we do the police department budget, we have to set stuff aside, so that's what he's making sure of.
Well, we'll put this on the list to give you guys, so you'll have it, um, I don't see anything on here that's current, you know, this...
Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
No, because he's got a budget for this, I mean, you guys...
Yeah, I know, but...
It's, it's him budgeting for this and, and, um, and, uh, changing the, um, the mileage rate to cover the cost, so that, really, there's...
So they know, you can put it on this list.
Just put it on the list, I think it goes on the bottom, on the bottom of the list with...
So they're aware of it, they can see it.
With the suggestion.
Like I said, this is a learning situation.
The next one's on the airport.
Oh, where's the airport? Okay. So, the airport, have we ever done anything for the airport, do they have their own funding, or how's that work?
No, it's general funding.
It's general funding.
Okay, all right, so we need to...
And they're all twenty twenty-three, except for the last one's twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause I think, isn't some of this, um, like, required?
Requirement of Federal Highway Administration.
Yeah.
So like the airport entry road, it needs to be resurfaced and fenced replaced, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, that needs to go on the list then, as, uh, twenty twenty-three has needed, the first one.
They wanna pave all the way from Old Laneway Road all the way into the...
But is that, is that, he says it's needed, I say that's desirable.
Desirable, yeah.
Well, let's put it down and put desirable next to it, the things we, four things we do have for this year.
Cause he said needed.
Are needed, and then we can put desirable for that one, and I think the, the board should make a decision.
What did he want said?
Hundred and thirty-five thousand.
I can't believe it.
Hundred and thirty-five.
Hundred and thirty-five thousand, we'll put desirable on there, that's our tape, right?
Yep.
We all agree with that, okay.
The ceiling, I think that's needed, because I think that's, isn't that like federal law or something?
Runway marking and seal coating?
The marking would be probably FAA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know about the seal coating.
It needs seal coating really bad, and we're trying to do the, the marking, we do the seal coat first, and I mean, otherwise, we gotta do it twice, so...
Okay.
Put them both.
So we're all agreed with that should be on there.
Put it on as needed.
Okay.
So desirable, so the, so the airport, so desirable, wouldn't you think that would go at the bottom of the list and not be, um, the top?
Yeah.
We're putting the roads and the police at the bottom, so airport...
Yeah, I'd put that on the twenty twenty-four.
Separate category.
Yeah.
And put desirable.
Yep, got it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and then, uh, repaving? They said that's desired.
That's desirable, that's twenty twenty.
So that goes down at the bottom.
You can make that dirty, yeah.
Right now, there's no markings on the runway at all, that's what's causing a lot of problems.
So, yeah, we put it down for as needed and this year, or next calendar year for fifteen grand, so... Okay, um...
The last list was, um...
The last, yeah, the DDA.
At the top, it has parks, but, because this list came from Mike, and I think he had, from the parks plan at first, and then DDA, so...
So how do we wanna...
Put most of these on, I think, are all DDA, the descriptions.
The, um, and I've heard conversation from the park commission, from the DDA, and from the township, that a sidewalk or pathway project extending down to the south end has been a priority in the past, um, the, because we took that out of the plan when the DDA initially did that because of bounds, but we don't, uh, you know, we, we're trying to encourage walking, walking from, um, walking from the school to, uh, the park, or to the neighborhood, to Tusk River Circle, or a wheel drive, or even, you know, anywhere in between, there's no sidewalks there, you're, they're walking on the road.
So how do we wanna, that's the first thing on the list, right?
Well, you said lights and sidewalks, and, and, you know, that's, and that's, that's a big number, I mean, that's gotta be a DDA project, so... Well, you said lights and sidewalks, and, and, you know, that's, and that's, that's a big number, I mean, that's gotta be a DDA project, so.
So, we put it on the list as.
DDA project, funding DDA.
Yeah, we'll put it on the bottom again.
Yeah, desirable.
Desirable.
Okay, I submitted one, a pathway down to the cooperation park, is that the one you're talking about, is that a different one?
Uh, where, where is that one, Jan?
It's the second, on the second page.
Second page.
Non-motorized pathway, from the school to.
Oh, that's the second page.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's on there separately.
Yeah, see, I don't know, was, did the first one, the sidewalk one, I just did a pathway, a non-motorized pathway.
Yep.
Um, which would be.
This is between Vivio's and Cooperation Park.
Yes, because the sidewalk actually goes through in our building.
The second page.
So, this is DDA, so this is their, so they've got their list here, and then each one is.
Yeah, just put that.
These are the, okay, so.
We, we put down twenty to thirty years, cause we've got, we've got a lot of.
Isn't that what they're required to do by law, I remember Diane Rakowski, or not Diane.
Right, right, you have to have a.
Yeah, she came into the women's club with their thirty-year, twenty-five-year, whatever it is, I still have it.
Yeah, especially with this one, things that you, that you have to have on a list because you have to incur a, a, a debt over time.
That whole discussion years ago.
I don't know.
The third item on here is charging stations, I thought the chamber was, had a grant and was doing that.
No, I kinda fell through the cracks.
I did.
And then, but I just went to a webinar two weeks ago, and there's quite a bit of money out there, so I called Carl and Smith at Consumers about, they're really boosting up, I mean, that's something that I wanted to get for our, our RC program, the MEDC, uh, charging stations was one of them. Trying to tie everything in, and maybe a little bit too big of a project, but it was the idea of expanding our parking lot and making the charges there. But right now, I mean, even on Martha Street would be, if we do do that.
The parking there?
Uh, it would be, to me, it would be needed because.
That'd be a great spot, Mike.
Yes, it would be, if we do like a, a, a Martha Street parking lot, to have charging stations there, but they're right at the BP right now, they have, they have two at the BP, and I, I called the McCarthys, and they, and they have no problem with us, you know, everybody, well, you're taking away from the.
Where's this again?
The BP station.
BP station, that's charging stations, electric charging stations.
Really, the one on the corner of sixty-eight and twenty-four?
The one down here, not the BP, I said BP, it's Marathon.
Yeah.
Marathon, it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's the easy one right there, the, um, and they don't have any problem with us putting something in town to attract people to come park and walk around.
Yeah.
So, how do we wanna handle the DDA, I mean, they've got stuff twenty, thirty years old, I don't wanna put all this on the list, but how do we do it?
Well, you could put DDA, GF, Township GF, General Fund, or you can, or you can put down, you know, it could be the grants.
Should we have a separate, another separate list?
Well, that's what I'm wondering how we wanna do it.
I'm looking at, so DDA, so they have the, uh, signage, develop off-street parking, uh, develop the farmer's market in the DDA district, Marina Park parking lot, pave. I, I don't know, I just feel like this is separate from.
I think anything that is, but, but, um, again, I, I see this, there, there are projects, and I've seen in other communities, like St. Agnes and Cedarville.
Yeah.
Where.
I see attached for DDA, I wouldn't try and put all this stuff on a.
No.
Can I make one comment?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
I've seen, uh, Inverness Township, Cedarville, St. Agnes, they do things in conjunction, the township in, with conjunction, with their DDA.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Like Inverness pays, the DDA pays into the sewer, to, to help supplement the sewer, and they do the same thing, I think, I think the, in Clark Township up in Cedarville. So, I think having those, I don't want them, I, I don't think they should be totally segregated from, from the township, and say, this is that, because I think it's something that the township and the Parks Commission would be interested in saying, okay, if it was grant money, this is something we should do together. I don't know how, how you're gonna do that.
But I, yeah, that's our question, is how do we take these three pages of stuff and put it in a format?
I gotta tell you, the, the ones that, number four, you can eliminate, uh, two, two is actually.
Number four, where's number four, oh, construct.
Faber's.
It's done, update signage, that is stuff that the, uh, DDA can take care of itself. The signage, the off-street parking, you're, you're discussing that right now with Martha Street.
Yeah, but is there CIP?
Farm market is, is on the list.
See, there's no CIP.
Yes, there is, it's the very first one, it's the very first one.
Oh, okay, so we don't need.
So, it's a bit.
And some of these, like expand a play area, that kind of goes into the parks as well.
Yeah.
See, the, the Marina Park is also in the DDA district, so I think they're gonna be working.
Shared responsibility.
I mean, they got a seawall for Marina Park boat launch for one to five years, they wanna do that.
Pedestrian footbridge over the Little Sturgeon Culver.
The stuff they got twenty to thirty year, I wouldn't even.
No, you're only supposed to go out six years, this is a six-year CIP plan, that's all it is.
But, but our plans are recorded, you, you can just wash that off it, cause it's in our plan.
Okay.
The DDA plan.
But here's the one thing that they wanna do now is a seawall at Marina Park Boat Launch, so we put that on the list.
Yeah.
A seawall at Marina Park Boat Launch.
That's on number twelve.
We already ha, isn't it already done?
No, this is, this is, this is actually between Old Lannaway Road and the tube, you know, you go down to Marina Park, and you, you can see where it's all torn up, and we need a seawall there.
Yeah, they wanna fix.
I would put that on the list.
Okay, so let's just run through, so the pathway from Vivio's.
That's twenty to thirty year, we're not gonna get into that.
You don't have to take that, you can change that, if it's.
Well, we're not gonna, we only go out five years anyway, or six years, and that's, uh, charging stations, I don't think we wanna get into that one, far as putting it on our list.
Can I, can I beg to differ with you?
Yeah, I'm gonna too.
Okay, that's my opinion.
But, but I'm, I'm just saying, if, if.
Because if you're gonna do the, if you're gonna do the parking lot, and you need, and you need to address this, you should do both of them.
Uh, that's one of the things that's required.
I mean, that's fine, that's why we're here to discuss it, so put that on the list too, and on, um, signage, you said we.
Number one is crossed off.
Yep.
Number two, the lights and sidewalks.
Crossed off, that's the wrong one, charging stations, put it on there.
Charging station, put it on.
Yep, and say TBD for the.
And we're gonna put it on, should we put it on, uh, the same time as the Martha Street parking lot?
I, I think that's a good.
Okay, sounds good.
So, so I'm gonna put that on for twenty-twenty-three.
Now, update signage, you said that's a.
That's, we've been talking about that long, and there's grants out there for that, I don't know that's something.
Do you want that on the list?
I guess I guess, Mike, I don't know for sure, we have it on our, on the DDA plan, so if that's something they decide to go along with, but does the township board want it on there?
Says one to five years, so if you, I would put it on there for twenty-five thousand.
So, I didn't see anything, I didn't see anything about landscaping, or the wells donated, but landscaping at the fish, at the fish?
No, we took it out, because we, actually, what we had on there was the, uh, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. Construct number four, Paperstone Park, and that's, all, all it really needs is the well, and the BLPA, and even the women's club that talked about coming forward with.
Yeah, that's gonna be funded separately from anybody.
So, that, yeah, so that.
We wouldn't put that on there, that's a, cause isn't the well, um, donated?
It's donated.
But the signage, though, the signage, if there's, uh, new signs over place at entry point, so wouldn't you put a sign down there at the fish?
We kind of stay away from that because of clear vision, we put our signs up there already, you're talking about an entry sign?
No, they're talking about updating the signs that come into Indian River.
We can't, we can't put anything there.
No, no, we're talking about replacing the signs we already have.
I know, you're talking about the, the M-dot signs, what signs are you talking about?
No, we're talking about the sign that says, welcome to Indian River.
That's up there, right when you get to the credit union. That's one of the credit union.
Okay, there's already one there.
And then there's one over there by the, um, Catholic Church.
Yeah, State Park, when you come in.
They wanna commonize them and update them.
Yeah.
So, should that be on the list?
Put that on the list, and just put funding DDA.
Yeah.
And then, and, and, and that.
So, we leave number five, new, so we leave number five, one to five years, and we're gonna put, they said one to five years, so we'll put twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah.
And as far as the fish upgrades, you know, the landscaping, the well, you can put that on, just put DDA and grant funding, you know?
No, there's nothing, none of that.
No, nothing.
It's all volunteer, volunteers and private donations.
It'd be self-funded, or private funded, and you can put private funding out there too.
Off-street parking.
So, we're aware of the projects going on around town, is basically what it is.
Okay, so off-street, so off-street parking.
Required somewhere else.
Yes.
So, we're gonna have two completely listed.
Well, it's, it, it's, like Janet said, maybe the board needs to know what we're doing, or what we've, we've taken from our.
We'll just put it on, yeah, put it on the list.
Wait, wait, what am I putting on the list?
Just say private funding or DDA funding or whatever, so we know where the money's coming from.
Yeah.
But this, what this does is coordinate the project, so we all know what's going on.
There's nothing that's submitted, there's nobody submitted it, so what, are we gonna start making our own?
No, and yeah, you're right, it's not, that's nothing that, that's just something that's going on, is all of a sudden, if the women's club, uh, wants to, uh, come to the DDA for a watering, uh, system, really doesn't need to go through the board.
No, it doesn't.
So, let's take that out, so leave it on, so, so moving on, so, so update signage, we're gonna leave on.
Yep.
Develop off-street parking, two hundred thousand.
That's ten to twenty, that's.
Wait, but that's going along with Martha Street.
Yep.
Well, we got that on there.
Yeah, so that's Martha Street, so, yeah, but if they're gonna go after two hundred thousand dollars in money, that needs to be here, right?
Yeah.
So, this one would be.
And off-street parking may be more than just Martha Street, something else comes up.
Yeah, I, I got, I've got a different vision for this, and it would take some buy-in from some community members, but I see a, a real, um, a, a good vision, and Doug kinda came up with it, right, going straight off of our parking lot here, all the way to Lake Street, behind McClatchy's, behind, uh, cause we have that sonally right there.
Yep.
And all that, and we have that, which is the old Septic Field, you dig that up and you start, you kinda have all that parking, but I don't, I wanna talk to Kathy and Gardner about it, because it's something, you know, it's their problem, what's that?
They park right there.
Yeah, they park right there, they're.
Well, that's something, yeah, I, I've been looking, we talked about that.
We have the Martha Street parking lot there.
Right, I think that'd be the one, put the.
I would put that in there as off-street parking, to be, you know, TBD as far as funding and how much you need, but it should be awareness that we.
So, this, so in my mind, this should be, this should be admin slash DDA.
Yeah.
The Martha Street.
Yeah.
Okay, and the, the farmer's market, I know you brought it up the other night, but it says they have it ten to twenty years out for a farmer's market, so you must want to.
That's all right, leave that on there, because we're in the planning stages, if it doesn't work out, we still need a backup plan.
Yeah, but there's, where's the pla, there, there's no, there's no farm, that's the only place we're here.
It was on this sheet, we're not gonna do it, it's ten to twenty years out.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that comes off.
Kind of like a snowmobile deal in the DDA district, five to ten years.
There's nothing the other.
I wouldn't put that in there, fifteen, the next number nine, fifteen to twenty-five years, no, I wouldn't put that on there.
I didn't say, but some sort of, uh, River Street, but, okay, yeah.
I would, wait a minute, can we look at number nine?
Yeah, go ahead.
Cause we have talked, and I'm meeting with Ruby from the Road Commission within the next week or two, um, just as part of the DDA project, we talked, but you, you've been about.
I've been about the net.
Is that how, those are, um, lake and river, um, are, have a, that was, that's the original business district.
The right-of-way, yeah, the right-of-way is building to building, so, so the, the road commission, so how, how do we fund parking, paving the parking, creating better parking spaces there in conjunction with the road commission? Yeah, lake and river, and she's got, he's got, you've got, is Floyd the same way?
Yeah, the problem is, I don't wanna, you don't wanna bully pulpit, uh, the homeowners down there, but the right-of-way is so wide, and it was meant to have on-street parking, probably horse and buggy back in the day, but it's wide, river and lake are very wide, and it's meant to have, you know, parking on both sides, but you've got the people on the, would be the west end of those roads, particularly Mark Hurst and Greg Seabert, the Halls, all of us, you're talking about that right-of-way. All the way, so you don't want, you wanna, you know, we gotta look at our DDA, we said we only go down so far, but is it something that, would people be interested in having that developed? I, I don't think people want all that parking in front of the houses, but it is right-of-way.
Yeah, so, but you.
So, how do we wanna capture it?
But we, but we don't have to go.
Well, I think you start with the DDA, because those are businesses, all the way to the log cabin place, and to Gus Cabs on the other side, which is gonna be, um, the new condos, that's where the.
Yeah, but how do we capture it on there?
It's gonna be DDA.
Off, off, DDA.
I think DDA, because you're gonna have to work with the road commission, it, it may be a special assessment district.
Could be a special assessment.
Okay, so, we just put it on the list and.
And.
Just so it's awareness.
So, they're saying twenty to twenty-five, uh, wait, where is that, they're saying fifteen to twenty-five years, so you wanna change that to, uh, twenty-twenty-three? You're gonna work on it with DDA?
Yeah, we're gonna, now Ruby's, uh, the new tech from the Road Commission, I agreed to, as soon as the snow kinda cleared, we could take a walk.
Well, then, okay, so the next one is pave Marina Park, they have no time estimate on it.
That's gonna be a big ticket.
We're gonna do the fixed, fixed man play area, twenty, twenty-five years, no.
Splash pad.
I think all of those things around that, Mike, all of those kinda go hand and glove, because you're gonna, you wanna repave that, you wanna expand the play area, you wanna take the footbridge, or the, the tube out, you wanna, uh, put in sheet steeling with more tie-ups, all of those kinda tie in together.
Okay. Uh, the next one is the seawall for Marina Park.
That was the second, would tie in with those other things.
Yeah.
So, do we need, that says one to five years, so is that something we need to put on the list?
I, I, realistically, I don't know right now, because we, you could, it would be nice to have those.
Okay.
The seawall, those tie-ups, but you.
So, that's not needed, it's, it's desirable, but we don't need to put.
I'm not gonna put any, so, so a lot of this stuff, so a lot of this stuff, the way this was explained to me, the way Diane explained this to, to the women's club a couple of years ago, was that they're required, the DDA is required to come up with a twenty-five years, a twenty-five or thirty-year plan.
So, we don't wanna mess up, all right?
So, these, this is what this stuff is, we don't need to put this in the CIP.
Okay, it's good to know, I guess.
But if you could attach that to the CIP, so we're, we're, um, aware of the projects that people are thinking about, that would be helpful, just like they're gonna attach the fiber plan of parks to the CIP, that would be very helpful.
They already, yeah, so they already have, you guys already have that.
The fiber plan and the DDA plan.
And the DDA plan.
So, you have both of those, so you can give that to them.
We've done, we've done since, uh, two thousand and ten, we've done two amend and extend, that means you change your plan and you extend your time out, and I believe it's forty years.
Is it forty?
Forty years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause that, it, it has to be that, uh.
Yeah, it's, it's required by law, right?
Okay, so, we're gonna take the parks plan that we have and the DDA plan, Mike's gotta, that's one, one time, and Mike's gonna make sure the board gets a copy of those two plans.
Okay, so that, oh.
So, for future use, you're gonna need a CIP squared, where you actually go out for thirty years, cause that covers the longest requirement in the whole township.
And that would be good, because, but, not just when we're budgeting, but just to make sure that there's communication of, of all of them.
Otherwise, five years is pretty well used.
So, that's kinda what this was, purpose was for, to get everybody working together with stuff.
Exactly.
Unfortunately, next year, hopefully, just, we'll have a whole year to mess with it, so.
All right.
Um, okay, so let's summarize where we're at, Dawn, tell me what you plan.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, so our next meeting is the twenty-seventh, that's our regular meeting.
Yeah. Do you think Diane will have any, Diane?
Denise?
Denise?
Denise will have anything for you.
I don't know, you wanna give her a call?
Yeah, I can.
You can give her a call, I'm gonna be gone next week, I'm gonna put this in a spreadsheet, put this in a spreadsheet, I'll pass it around to you guys, so you can take a look at it.
Okay.
If I miss anything, let me know, I'll update, and then we can discuss it at the twenty-seventh, we're done, we hand it out.
Well, we need to get it to them by the fifteenth.
It's not probably gonna get done by the fifteenth, I'm gonna tell you that right now.
Okay.
Everything's been delayed this year, it's New Year's.
So, after the twenty-seventh, once we approve, yeah, the whole thing, then we'll give it to you before the.
Yeah, we'll, we can, I mean, you guys can, everybody can look at it.
Yeah, it's, it's been a.
Fifteenth has moved to May first.
Okay, so, but yeah, it's, with May first is fine.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Cause it's been a, interesting year getting all this stuff together, getting people on the same page, so.
We, we expect the delays.
Okay, but we plan on.
I'm not gonna be here, and I'm not, I'm gonna be taking care of kids for a week.
Okay, I'm gonna be gone next weekend, so I gotta go down and see my grandkids, so, but.
That's where I'm headed.
Okay, so, well, you're gonna put it together, you're going to.
I'll send it out to you guys.
We'll review it on the twenty-seventh, bless it, then we'll send it on to the board.
So, I'll put it together, I'll send it to you guys, everybody look at it, if you see something that's missing or whatever, or you.
And then we can approve it at the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh meeting, Janet, you know, she might be there too, to look at it, when we got it, maybe we'll send her a copy ahead of time too, or no?
Up to you, I don't care.
We'll send you a copy, so you see what we're gonna look at on the twenty-seventh.
Absolutely, great.
You seem to be the point person of this stuff, so.
I'm trying, it's good for me too, so.
Well, we're trying to, it's.
Yeah, I know, and I appreciate your help.
No, no, send me the.
Prioritize everybody's half to half list, you know, it's like going through the, the kids' Christmas list when they check off everything in the Sears catalog, it's like, okay, what do they really want?
Okay, uh, we're set, we reviewed it, now I'm going to put it together.
Yep, so we're done with that.
We're done with that, so now we're at public, public comments, is there any public?
This has nothing to do with what you guys did today, but when I was doing the petitions for, and I don't even know if you guys are the right people to talk to, when I was doing the petition for the public road matter, for the Township to pay for it, um, I was requested to ask, South Avenue, we want to know if, uh, temp, or current, um, a speed bump or a four-way stop. The speed that people go down that road is disgusting, and people are afraid that little kids are going to get hurt. I don't know, but do you guys have any?
Road commission, that's a road commission.
I got to tell you, I went through Savannah last week and I could, of course, they don't plow snow all the time either.
Yeah.
But they're a, a nice, uh, level, it comes up a little bit and then goes up, you still have to slow down. I'm sure, I wonder if it's something that the plows could work over, but we talked about, well, I don't know. It isn't like a speed bump that you see, it goes like this, flatten and down again, and I just wonder if it's something at every intersection or between every intersection, if they know it's there, you know, and they're, and they're not, they're not asphalt, they're, like, if they have a little approach on it, then they have, top is asphalt.
So what's the problem, so why are people speeding on South? Is it because South is so long with no stops?
It's not just South, it's, it's, it's all over town, people like to hit the gas in town and.
Is there, is there, um, speed site, uh, speed limit signs posted?
Actually.
Well, residential is twenty-five, maybe we should drop.
Well, you can't.
That would be, they would have to, and I'm not trying to dissuade you from it, because I would love to see that, they, the, the Road Commission has to request the state police to do a speed study.
And they won't.
And I got to tell you, we did one here and guess what? They went up to forty-one miles an hour.
Well, it doesn't.
If they changed it, it'd pull up.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't, and it doesn't.
It's not easy to get things done, we lived in Davidson.
So now you're saying I have to go to Suburban County?
The Road Commission. The Road Commission, right down the road.
Beth, I'll work with you on that, I can, I'll work with that, I'll, I'll give them a call and talk, we want to talk about a speed study in town.
Okay.
But you know what the problem is, is enforcement, and we can't be everywhere.
No, I, I think, I'm not the one that asks, somebody has to be asked for it.
Okay, so, so you know what, so you know what helps?
You're just the messenger, huh? You're just the messenger.
Not just, not just signs, the signs that says your speed, because they think people are tracking that.
Yeah.
Where's the one for, by the golf club, or that?
That's, that's a back in Georgia right now being repaired.
Okay.
They finally got it mailed out.
Do you think, in this, I'm just asking, a four-way stop would make it any better, or not?
You know, the problem, Beth, you're going to find is you get the state police involved, the, the Road Commission.
I'll tell you what, Gordon and I, if Gordon's in today, we'll, we'll, I'll call Matt Hall and say, uh, the Road Commission manager.
Well, I can call it if I have to.
That's, that's what I'm looking at, no, I, I appreciate that, because we, we've got concerns, we've had concerns about every time, you know, that, especially summertime comes, you get people, and I saw another thing, and I don't know if this is something we should be getting involved in, maybe the board could get involved with the police department, but we got all these cars going, like, and we got all these kids driving these golf carts.
Well, and the bike, kids on the bikes.
Well, I brought that up there too, to Gordon once, and he said, well, if we see them and they look underage, we'll take them off.
Well, I tell you what they got, and I saw it on, every golf cart on the street had to be registered.
They do.
With their unit.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't cost any, like, ten bucks or something, just to, you get a little sticker to say you, you're registered for that year, uh, but you can't just all of a sudden let your kids take it out, here are the rules.
But it's a big problem all over up north.
There's lots, there's lots.
And more and more golf carts are being sold because they're advertising them to drive around towns, so, but nobody stops them.
But they're not allowed to have them on twenty-seven or sixty-eight.
This is under board comments. I'm, I'm piggybacking on Beth's comments, but, but in terms of something to, to think about for, and, and we, you and I have talked about how the Planning Commission is concerned about congestion and traffic and traffic problems, but, you know, somebody comes in and they pay town, ten dollars for the little sticker, they understand all the rules. If somebody goes out and their, the sticker and their ten-year-old kid is driving and you know, you don't have an operator's license, you know, then you get a ticket.
So are we?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
So are we done with public comments? Janet, do you have anything? Okay, so board comments, so you want to finish?
That's what I'm, but, just a thought, down the road to think about.
Okay, so I have a board comment to answer her question, because I've learned all about this stuff.
Yeah.
Have I not? So, so the process is, he has to require, he has to ask the Road Commission to do a traffic study. The Road Commission has to get with the state police to do a traffic study. The state police has to do the tra- traffic study and make a recommendation, and that's where the hang-up is, because the state police, we did this down on, on Frontenac, because the state police says it's the law, subdivision.
Twenty-five.
It's twenty-five, it's the law, enforce the law. So Gordon goes down there and writes tickets, these people go up there and up to the judge to pay their tickets, and they say, I didn't see speed limit sign. And it gets thrown out.
It's a long process.
So it's a long process and state police are.
That's bird-cried, I'll say.
Yeah.
Just real quick, when we lived in Davidson, the corner of Lippincott and M fifteen, they had a stop sign at Lippincott.
Yep.
There were like ten accidents when we lived there, we lived a mile from there, my wife went through the Township Board, went through the attorney, went to the state police, five years after we moved out of Davidson, they put a light. It took that long, it took ten years for them to do a study, and so that's what it may take, just to give you a.
So, so for us in Richfield Township, it was a guard rail to keep people from going off the road? How that got solved was somebody got almost killed.
Well, we had four or five people over there, but, okay.
Business district here, I was going to.
Is there any more?
I, I have one comment.
Sure.
I'm, actually, it's a question, maybe Mike knows, does anybody know what the results of the Planning Commission was last night? They had, the in-between was on.
Yes, it was, it was approved.
It's what?
It was approved.
It was approved.
So what are they doing about parking, that's my question.
They're, they don't have that big, they own the, the lot across the street where the old brick building is, and they're tearing that down and making a parking lot there. And in terms of, you know, all that can be waived because that's, uh, the overlay district, the, the Philly Center overlay, so they don't, you know, they don't have to point out so many.
They were only required to have seven spots for their employees, and they have that in front of the building.
But they were supposed to have seven spots for their employees, but they were also supposed to have.
Their condos.
Condos, they had to have dedicated across the street, so there was only.
That was covered, so they covered, now the other guy, uh, he has not been able to.
He's withdrawn him, he's withdrawn his request because he wants to retool his parking plan.
Well, yeah, plus Bob had told me that he's going from nine condos to four now.
Oh, really?
That's what Bob had said, because that's a relation to him or something, but I don't know that for sure.
I don't know, it's, it's, it's inverse.
Yeah, so he did pull it because of the problem, especially too with the, the boat launch or the boat, um, what do you call it, to put in the seawall out and dredging and all that too is a big item, so. It's more complicated, I think, what the guy thought when he did it, so, but, uh, okay.
Well, down to your question.
I appreciate, uh, you guys sitting down with us, it was a, a learning process for everybody, hopefully, you know, it helps, and, uh, well, uh, just one more thing, Don had rewrote the, uh.
Ordinance.
Ordinance forty, to hopefully comply with, you know, what the board wanted, we sent it to Bob, Bob had requested that, that he was going to take that and the resolution that he was going to put together and send that to the lawyer and make, see which one he feels we should have, and we'll go with that, we just want to make sure we're compliance with the MTA and the law, so.
And that should get done, because Denise Klein, she said, that should, that should be done sooner than later.